Good. Johnny, ready? Welcome to the City of Newport Regular Meeting of the Board of Commissioners, August 18th, 2025, at 6:30 PM. Please rise for a moment of silent reflection, followed by the pledge. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tiffany, please call the roll.
Commissioner Redwansky.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith Morrow.
Here.
Commissioner Rektin.
Here.
Commissioner Sutherland.
Here.
Mayor Cadulli.
Here. First item on the agenda is a consent agenda item, which will include orders 52, 53, 56, 55, and 57. Looking for a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mayor, this is, uh, the board is familiar with property, the first three are property assessment moratoriums. This is for the public certification. When someone desires to do a rehab on a piece of property, um, they can, with the city only, freeze the value of that for tax purposes. So that's a five-year deal. This does not have an effect on their, their school or county taxes, but it still is, it's a benefit for the property owner to reinvest in the property. So we have three tonight, uh, one on the 300 block of West 11th, one on the 1,000 block of Mama Street, one on the 600 block of Linden. That is not Commissioner Redwansky's house, by the way. And, um, we have a couple of surplus items. There was some items that we had in a storage locker, um, just display cases, some old couches, things of that nature. We are going to look into the value of those things before we place them on gov deals or whatever the best way to dispose of them to get the best value. So that we're still looking at. The other surplus property is a, um, 1999 Ford Ranger, uh, which is still actually in use, but as, uh, as definitely, we've gotten our money's worth out of that for sure, for 26 years. That's the overview of the items that it lists are on the consent agenda.
Any questions on the board? In the public? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Sutherland.
Yes.
Commissioner Redwansky.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith Morrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Rektin.
Yes.
Mayor Cadulli.
Yes. And the entry to the meeting was actually very efficient. It takes us right to public forum. So if you have an item that is not currently listed on the agenda, this is the time. Public forum going once, twice. Public forum has closed. We're going to move to old business, second reading of Commissioner's Ordinance Number Six.
Mayor?
Yes.
Approval of minutes.
Oh, yes. Approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Of the July 21st, 2025 regular meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second. Any questions or corrections? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Redwansky.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith Morrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Rektin.
Yes.
Commissioner Sutherland.
Yes.
Mayor Cadulli.
Yes. Now, old business, second reading of Commissioner's Ordinance Number Six.
An ordinance of the Board of Commissioners, City of Newport, Kentucky, enacting and adopting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Newport, Kentucky.
So moved.
Second.
This is just simply an update where, um, all of our ordinances that were adopted in year 24 will be added and updated on our website and the ordinance hard copy as well.
Thank you, John. Any questions on the board or comments? In the public? Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Smith Morrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Rektin.
Yes.
Commissioner Sutherland.
Yes.
Commissioner Redwansky.
Yes.
Mayor Cadulli.
Yes. Second reading of Commissioner's Ordinance Number 10.
An ordinance of the Board of Commissioners, City of Newport, Kentucky, creating Chapter 103 within the title, uh, General Regulations, the Code of Ordinances Regarding Establishing Guidelines for the Approval, Placement, and Design of Murals.
So moved.
Second.
John?
This is a, um, conversation that we've had over time about murals in, um, within the community. This establishes guidelines of which we had none, as the board is aware. This, this was in front of the HP Commission for Comment, and, um, I think they have two meetings on that, actually, and then it came in front of the board here. This also will allow us to, um, reconstitute, reconvene, rather, we're not going to change the board, uh, the, um, mural committee about the murals on the flood wall. We get a significant amount of interest in what's going on with those, and I understand why. And Josh Tunning, who did a nice job with the Park Committee, will, uh, be helping get the mural committee back going again, so that we can come up with a comprehensive plan for all of the murals on the flood wall, not just a panel or two. So that's, that's all part and parcel with this ordinance that, uh, up for second read tonight.
Thank you, John. On the board?
Yeah, just a quick question, Brian. Wendy's looked through all these mural stuff, and she's okay with all this.
Yes.
Yeah, cool. Thank you. Enjoy it.
Thank you, Ken. Anyone else on the board?
I would just really, again, compliment the staff and the Historic Preservation Commission for the work done on this. It's been really thorough, and I think it allows a lot of flexibility, which, as I understand it, a lot of communities really don't have, so I think we'll really benefit from that.
Thank you, Julie. Anyone in the public? I'll just add that I think, uh, murals play a key part of placemaking in the community. I think that public art is important, and I think moving this forward is important, and I appreciate all the work getting there. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Rektin.
Yes.
Commissioner Sutherland.
Yes.
Commissioner Redwansky.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith Morrow.
Yes.
Mayor Cadulli.
Yes. Second reading of Commissioner's Ordinance Number 11.
An ordinance of the Board of Commissioners, City of Newport, Kentucky, amending Section 99.99 of the Code of Ordinances Regarding the Penalty for Violation of the Provisions of the Rental-Dwelling License.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor, this was just a minor change, um, as we discovered, uh, doing some work, uh, that there was no, uh, there was a discrepancy in our ordinance versus what our documentation says as the class of misdemeanor. So this essentially just cleans up, um, the ordinance.
Understood. Any questions on the board? Anyone in the public? Tiffany, please call the roll.
Commissioner Sutherland.
Yes.
Commissioner Redwansky.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith Morrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Rektin.
Yes.
Mayor Cadulli.
Yes. Second reading, Commissioner's Ordinance Number 12.
An ordinance of the Board of Commissioners, City of Newport, Kentucky, amending Section 37.073(c)(3) of the Code of Ordinances Regarding the Annual Occupational License Fee.
So moved. Second.
Uh, in similar vein, Mayor, this is a very, uh, minor change to the, um, our occupational license fee. It just clarifies, uh, that their contractors and subcontractors also fall into that. They always did, uh, but just to be abundantly sure, as we have a lot of big projects coming along, and you can imagine that these can get slipped through the cracks, so we just want to make sure it's very clear for people where the fees lie and who has to pay them.
Thank you, John. Anyone on the board? Anyone in the public? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Redwansky.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith Morrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Rektin.
Yes.
Commissioner Sutherland.
Yes.
Mayor Cadulli.
Yes. Takes us to new business and Commissioner's Order Number 48.
An order of the Board of Commissioners, City of Newport, Kentucky, authorizing Director, directing Mayor Thomas L. Cadulli Jr. to enter to and execute a professional service agreement with Corporex Development and Construction and Management, LLC regarding James Taylor Park Improvements.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is a, um, an agreement between, uh, the city and Corporex as the master developer for the James Taylor Park project. As the board is aware, uh, in 2006, the city commission entered into a development agreement with Corporex. Among the things that were in this, uh, comprehensive agreement, all dealing with ovation and how things move forward there, one of the items was that Corporex, at which, at such a time as that we were going to renovate James Taylor Park, that they would be the master contractors there, uh, subject to reasonable, uh, fees and conditions. Uh, so we have spent time working with Corporex. We've sent drafts back and forth. Uh, I know some of the community will have questions. This had been on our agenda a couple of times and got pulled off. There was nothing nefarious with that. It was just getting some things clarified on, on both sides of the issue here, so that we can make sure the public has a very transparent process. There was a seven and a half million dollar grant that the City of Newport and with help from, uh, the folks at Corporex pursued from the state of Kentucky, which was awarded here, uh, which is why we have the money to move forward with this project. So I know Brian's got a couple of things to add to that, and then Andrew Vassilio from Corporex is here, uh, to explain a little more in depth.
So, uh, John, if you could go to the next slide there. So just referencing what, uh, John was talking about, this is language from the 2006 Master Development Agreement that the city entered into with Corporex for the purchasing, uh, development of the site, uh, in and around Corporex. This did give Corporex, uh, the, um, ability to be the construction manager for the park and any subsequent construction thereof. I want to make it clear, however, and I've heard this rumor, I'm sure everybody else has on the board, uh, this did not give the park away. This did not give the park to Corporex. This simply is Corporex building the park for a fee, and this contract reflects that. To what, uh, city manager Hayden was speaking to, there was a significant amount of work back and forth between Corporex and the city to get to the contract, uh, what you have in front of you tonight. Uh, this also including using outside counsel for final review of these, uh, of this contract as well, and my favorite, uh, using AI attorney to, uh, to review this as well. And, uh, we feel fairly comfortable with the contract that's before you tonight. In addition to your packet, um, Corporex has provided a, uh, comprehensive budget estimate that was put together between Corporex and, uh, a large, uh, contracting outfit to come up with some, uh, ideas of what numbers will look like for the amenities that were, uh, placed in the plans and, uh, that came out of the Park Committee and otherwise. So, um, a few things that are contained in the, the contract. This gives the city the final say on what is being built in the park. The Corporex also has to abide by the state procurement laws. This doesn't just give them the right to spend the seven and a half million dollar grant, uh, they have to follow all of the state bidding requirements, just as though we will. Uh, there is a review process for that, uh, as well as checks and balances, uh, contained therein. This is not uncommon for, uh, public-private partnerships to occur, uh, much like the parking garage that's being built currently. Josh Tunning is also here tonight. Josh did a lot of work, uh, with the Park Committee, getting the design to this point. John, if you go to the next slide. I just put a couple of the slides up here, uh, one more on that. These are some, um, some renderings, some 3D renderings of some, uh, potential amenities in the park. This park is spread out. It's, it's long, but it is narrow. The archway there is kind of the focal entry point. There is initial thought to put this overlook, hang it more towards out onto the Licking River portion there, uh, a stage, an updated, uh, pavilion structure there. John, if you go to the next one. This is a site plan view. This kind of shows the extent of the, uh, the project and the area in which it's, uh, encompassing. So this will change up a few things, including, uh, access. One of the big issues that we did have, and still, uh, working through pieces of that, is with the bridge construction, uh, on the Fourth Street Bridge in the state of Kentucky. State of Kentucky, uh, has indicated that they are going to no longer try to access the bridge through the, the park, uh, and are going to be barging in a lot of their operation. So they're going around and over it in, uh, in any which way, except for through the park, which is positive to be able to get this project off and running and timely. It's anticipated Andrew can help me with that when he comes up. I believe that we're looking to get this started, uh, very, very soon. Applications of the Corps of Engineers have already been submitted, and work has already been done there, and, uh, I think we're at the point of, uh, getting this out to bid. So, um, Josh, can you come up real quick before we have Andrew and give a little, um, recap of all the good work that you did with the Park Committee?
Absolutely. Uh, thank you for having me. Josh Tunning, Municipal Specialist with the City of Newport. So just wanted to briefly talk about the Park Committee and the great work they've done the past several months. A little bit of history, the Park Committee first started two, three-ish years ago, and they kind of met off and on, sometimes they would meet once for the whole year, and there wasn't much news. But when we got the grant funds from the state of Kentucky to move forward with the park, we knew we had the energy and the resources to move forward. So in March of this year, we reconvene the Park Committee, and thanks to a grant from the Kentucky Division of Forestry, we were able to hire Hub and Weber Architects to meet with the Park Committee for each meeting to really look at the parks, and not just James Taylor Park, but the entire riverfront of our city, to make a vision and realize what we want this park to be in the future. So starting from March, going all the way through about Ju-, late June, these folks met every other week. We have a few folks in the crowd tonight from the Park Committee, C. Jen Shepard, Charlie Wood, Kate McElwin, Rosemary Williams. Uh, these folks were there every meeting, putting in hours of volunteer work. It was our residents from all neighborhoods in Newport. We had, uh, our business owners who are part of this committee. I'm thinking of folks like Alan from B&amp;B of Riverboats, Mark Ramler from the Newport Business Council, um, and we also had, a lot of people don't know, thanks to a grant the city got last year, the National Park, um, Service was on this committee. We had Russell Clark and Joshua Moore from, again, the National Park Service that was on this committee, helping us each step of the way. So this group met bi-weekly. They would come up with plans based on some of the feedback we've had over the years. Hub and Weber would draw these plans, and I have some handouts in front of you, and I got more copies for anyone who needs it. And we would do this back and forth, where they would update these drawings. We'd meet again in two weeks, give more feedback. Um, and these meetings were open for anyone to attend. Sometimes we'd have some folks that would join for a meeting, say their piece, and they wouldn't show up again, and that's okay. They felt heard, and that's why we wanted to have these things. Uh, at the end of June, we had an open house at B&amp;B Riverboats. Huge shout out to them for being good supporters of this and hosting it. We had well over a hundred people attend that meeting. It was really exciting to hear all the feedback, um, and we ended up with where we are at today with these plans for James Taylor Park and Festival Park. I think what we did here is pretty special. It wasn't just us hiring a consultant to come up with a pretty plan. It was us meeting with the community for really months and hearing from them each time about what they want to see, what were their hopes for the park. Uh, I want to give a shout out to Andrew with Corporex. He was at each of these meetings as well, not only, you know, uh, being open to this feedback, but encouraging this feedback as part of the plan. They've been a great partner in this whole process. So I really feel the plans that we came up with today for James Taylor Park and Festival Park really represent what our community, our residents, our local business owners want to see on our riverfront. So it really is a park, not just for our community, but that was designed by our community. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Josh. Any questions on the board? Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, Josh, I just want to say, you know, um, I think the key thing about this project is the level of engagement from the community was there. It's something where this is a landmark project as long, along with Festival Park as well, where the city might have a chance to revitalize a park maybe every hundred or so years. What's different about this and what makes it stand out, in my opinion, as a landmark project, is that the community was there the whole step of the way. These discussions were open to the public for people to attend to give their feedback, and I think that's something that truly reflects, um, the leadership of our board and the direction that we've been going in with our, uh, new, new city manager and our leadership. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Anyone else on the board? Thank you, Josh.
So, Mayor, if I could, just a couple of other things to follow up on with, with what Josh said, and Josh did a fantastic job with this Park Committee, um, much better than I could have, uh, done myself, and I'm, uh, more than willing to admit that. So, uh, I started the Park Committee meetings myself, and, uh, Josh is, is very good at this, uh, this particular thing, so. A couple of things too to add, uh, to this is, um, one of the, the discussions has been a, a center point to, uh, the park and the bridge and how that interaction is. And, and we have a lot of different moving pieces that are happening in a very small area down here, um, that affects not only the park, the rowing club, uh, the bridge and the surrounding area. And, um, through the discussions with KYTC, uh, we had proposed a ramp installation up and over the, uh, flood wall to get access for the bridge construction to keep it out of James Taylor Park. This is a complicated project to build to begin with, and it was going to take up additional land area that would have to been acquired through right-of-way acquisition. It just was unlikely to happen, along with core approval and all those things. That's why the, the, the folks at KYTC in District 6 decided that it was best to barge in most of their operation, and, um, we, we're grateful to them for that. Though the discussion turned after that, um, about the barging operation is about access to, uh, the south of James Taylor Park and some of the desires that we have to continue that effort to bring in an additional, uh, either floodgate or some of their access piece south of the Fourth Street Bridge. The, the folks from KYTC, uh, at the cabinet level indicated that they were more than willing to continue that conversation with us, uh, while they didn't make a fir-, a firm commitment, but they did commit to work with us to find options and find funding sources for that access piece. They see that as being important as well, not only for, um, the, the community, but for their own certain purposes as well, for access for maintenance and repair. Keep in mind, we have to keep this area open. SD1 has equipment in this area. The bridge has to remain to be accessed, uh, for maintenance and upkeep after the completion of that, and ultimately the rowing club. So these are going to be active and ongoing conversations that we're going to be having, uh, with the state and others, uh, a little longer term about how that access piece is going to, to come to play. One of the other things is, it's a, a little bit more of a sensitive topic that's, uh, involves the park is the issue of, of the wildlife and wild cats that are in the park. There's a, a large amount of cats that congregate in this area, and there are folks that are, these are very near and dear to these folks that come down and feed these cats. And we know that through the construction of the park and the bridge that this is likely to affect those animals. So we're working with our staff, uh, as to see what the, the most, uh, beneficial and humane way that we can treat these cats and, uh, relocate them to a better place that's not, um, right in the middle of a construction zone. And we'll make sure that we do that in the best way possible, and, um, I understand that may upset some, but we'll, we'll, we'll do our best, uh, for the, for the cat's sake as well. So, uh, Andrew's here, if, uh, you have anything to add on the Corporex end of this and what, how this is going to go?
Sure. Come up to the podium. Thank you for inviting me tonight, and Josh, thank you for your kind words. Josh, I'll, um, equal those words earlier that Josh did a fantastic job with the Park Committee. Uh, it was a pleasure to be a part of each and every one of those meetings, and, and I think that, um, to Commissioner Redwansky's, um, comment that the community really came together, and it was really, uh, a joint effort. So we're very excited about the park. We're very excited to get started as quickly as possible, um, and, uh, I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
On the board? Ken looks like he's ready.
Oh, I'm always ready. Always ready. Andrew, you've made application for, with the Corps.
Yes, sir.
For all the structures and those type of things down there. Um, I would like to see you support an application for a breach in the flood wall south of the bridge or thereabouts, so that we can get pedestrian access. Would you be supportive of that?
We certainly could look into it. I know we've had several discussions with the, uh, Army Corps, uh, and KYTC, um, so I'm happy to continue those conversations.
You know, Bill and Tom have done a great job with the Corps. They really have, and it's through their efforts they were able to do the, what they've done down there with the ovation. I would really encourage that to happen, because we need access from that southern side. And to fly over, I don't know how, any other way to get pedestrians from west Newport into that park. Do you?
No, I'm, I'm not aware of any.
So what I'd love to hear is not looking into it, reminds me of Tommy Boy, but you know.
Not this Tommy Boy. The movie.
I knew which, which Tommy Boy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But really, to take a positive effort and to make that application on our behalf with the city, I think the city would be supportive of that application.
I will certainly, um, go back to Mr. Butler and, um, um, discuss that with him and encourage him to do so.
When do you might, when might you get back to us on that?
Um, I mean, as soon as I can, uh, get an answer.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and following up on timelines, when do we get final documents on, on what we're building? Or is this your final document?
That is the final doc, well, I don't, I'm not sure exactly which one you're looking at there, but.
This is the one that was distributed this evening.
Yeah.
Says draft on it.
That's not the most recent version, no, sir. That's November 25th. The most recent version is, uh, March, um, which probably doesn't vary all that much. From there, it's more detailed.
Okay.
More detailed set of plans.
Before we approve those? Now, according to the contract, the agreement, we approve that, right? It'll be brought to us in the form of an order, or how will we handle that?
I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know whether it needs to be voted on, but it certainly will be disseminated and discussed thoroughly before we move forward with it.
Well, I want to go through procedures too, if you bear with me, Tommy, a little bit. Is that all right?
Sure.
Not Tommy Boy, Tommy.
Yes.
How will we? You know, I look on this as a construction draw. Is that the way you look at it, Andrew?
Look at what? I'm sorry.
This funding for this as a construction draw?
Correct.
Yeah. And, and how will those be happening without Lenny here? Who is going to monitor X percent completed, X percent dispersed?
So, Commissioner, on that, typically what will happen in a deal like that is, we'll have the terms, then, uh, as things happen, I encourage me to enroll in some of those, Andrew, but they'll submit documents to our office that will, first will go through finance to make sure, one, yes, this is the right project with the right amount of money, and then they'll also supply backup to that. So typically, Lenny will bring a check to me after he's gone through it. Any check in the city over a certain amount of funds has to be signed, both by city manager and by, uh, the finance department, so that way there's two checks on that. So Lenny would read all that, go through, and then it would be, go to my office for further review and documentation.
What I'd like to do, we've limited this exposure to 7.5, so what I'd like to do is have an engineer in that interface on our behalf to make sure the completion matches the, um, funding, so that we're assured and we stay within a certain framework. Now, having been a banker, I understand what construction draws do, you know, and that's what I like to see, you know? Is that amenable to you? And is that something we can do internally?
Ken, if I could, uh, comment on that, and, and this, I'll speak to this with the process that we have currently in place with the parking garage, is that we don't have a third-party engineer representing the city. So what happens is, is these come in 30, essentially 30-day increment draws with all of the backup. Now, most companies will use a product or a program called ProCor, or something along that lines, that lays out all of the hours and all of the billables that are associated with that. Using the parking garages as a, for example, all of the backup, including all the invoicing and all the billing from subcontractors all the way down to the billable hours that, uh, that the construction manager is billing for, attached with a, a form and a sheet that is signed and stamped by the architect of record, the design profession, design professional and responsible charge of the project. This is very typical in the industry. That person is placing their license as a design professional or architect at risk, saying that these are true and accurate statements, that these, these bills are correct, and this is what we're paying for is accurate. In the case of the parking garage, we have multiple staff people that are also in the loop on this. So it doesn't just go to John. This will come to me first. I'm heavily involved in the day-to-day discussion with the parking garage. Dave Rogers is also in that loop as well. So on top of that, what we had, and we did this very early on, we started meeting with Bill Richardson about keeping track of every nickel that's spent and every invoice that's coming along. So he's done that on the parking garage, albeit a little late to the game because he wasn't here when the parking garage started. But it's it's an effort to track and keep all of those, keep it all above board.
So that all sounds good. So we're going to do the exact same thing with this project?
That's all contained within here, yes. Same same process.
We're going to see when you send out an invoice and you sign an invoice, John, you're going to know that that invoice represents now we're at 80% of completion of the project and we're 80% of completion of the money. Because I just don't want to see this thing get ahead of us.
It is obviously a concern, Commissioner, and that is what's one of the things that we spend a lot of time talking with Andrew and the folks at CorpRex about is that we've got this seven and a half million dollars and that we want to guard it, and we want to make sure that it's done, you know, within that price range because of obvious economic issues that we have. So yeah, that's exactly right. We're going to be very meticulous about this, and I'm sure their folks will be as well. But like Brian said, it's going to get several touches on staff every time these things come over.
I would like to see the final drawings, you know, before we we commit to this. I'll commit to it tonight, but before we start dumping out money, I want to see the final drawings, and I want to see cost estimates on each one of those items. I'm not sure that the budget that was submitted is, it doesn't seem to coincide with this. You know, it has a line I'd have been there for art of a million bucks, and I don't, you know, see that in here anywhere. So I'm wondering how we're, I want to see things coincide. So when we get to the point of going out on bid, which you will do.
Sure.
I'd like to know what those numbers are and that they do stay within, or do we have to go back and value engineer the project and say we have to take this out and this out in order to make it fit?
So the the final plans do call out placeholders for art installations. In addition to that, once we execute this agreement, our plan is to take this out to bid. Get hard bids, not just estimates, and then come back to the city and say, here we are.
It'll come back to us again.
It's the agreement spells that out very clearly. Yes, yes.
I just want to, I want that verbally said.
Yes.
And also, there was a refinement of the budget. So we got an updated budget that actually clarified all those points and refined it down and distilled it to the items.
And that budget was put together with the final plans with a very reputable general contractor in town.
And frankly, that's what delayed this process was to get those Ts crossed and those Is dotted. And I thank you for the effort and your patience of getting to this point because we needed that, and it was important work, and I appreciate you doing it.
No, I really like Tommy, the fact that we're going to see final plans first, and we're going to see real numbers attached to those plans.
That's right. That's embedded in the agreement as well. Any other questions on the board?
Yeah. Go ahead, Aaron.
Okay. So yeah, thank you so much for your work on this and for working with our community. As Commissioner Radwansky said, it's so important to have public input on this park. As you know, based on the meetings that we've had in the city manager's office, this park is near and dear to a lot of Newport New Portians' hearts. And, you know, the fact that some of the things that have happened down there in the past few years, a lot of people have been upset with. So actually seeing this project come together and having public input was super important. I know you spent a lot of time with that, so thank you for that. My questions are similar to his. I guess this is not a final rendering of what's going to happen here. For example, I see a playground, but I don't see a budget estimate for a playground in your budget that you gave us. Is that maybe, maybe it's encompassed in one of these other?
Commissioner, we have, we've talked about playground because, and we're not getting into the weeds of Festival Park tonight, but obviously they, parks touch. And we are looking at what hopefully will be some phases of Festival Park that will come in front of this board very soon as well. And so I think the idea behind that is we'll put some playground equipment there because we don't want to duplicate services on one side of the park as to the other.
Okay, that makes sense. Yeah, I think that just seeing the final picture, what's going to happen tied with this budget is going to be really helpful for us to see. But, you know, this, in addition to Festival Park, is going to be huge. Those two together, you know, we may be able to have a really cool playground in Festival Park. And there's no point in spending money both places if you can just have one that's really good rather than two that are mediocre. So I don't think that's such a bad idea. So yeah, thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks for, thanks for being patient with us as we ask additional questions.
No problem.
Julie.
All right. Thank you, Andrew, for being here and spending time with us. Thank you, Josh, for all the work you've done and to the community. This is really a big deal. I can't wait to see how beautiful it will look. I'm also interested in just briefly touching on the way the payments work and how that will be aligned to the to the budget, which we do appreciate receiving. Am I correct in thinking that the big portions, the big blocks in the budget will align with the schedule of values?
That's correct.
Okay. So things will be matched up with that, which will match up with the budget. And if there's anything that's, then that would be a good time to review.
Absolutely. So essentially, we'll get hard bids. We'll review those with the city, approve those bids, and those bids will then become a schedule of values. That schedule of values will align with our 702, 703 form that we would be submitting for payment each month. So and then to Commissioner Reckton's point, you'll see a percentage complete on each of those draws as we go through the process.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Two quick things. So Andrew, just to make it real easy and put a bow on it, do you think you can do it for 7.5 million?
I do. I feel confident.
Okay, great. And Mayor, you know, I think since the the community put so much effort into this, and I even think back, you know, we've been talking about the Festival Park like long before even COVID, I think, you know. I think it'd be really great if we could do something for the folks in the community. Maybe perhaps, Josh, you might have some ideas, even t-shirts, something that gives them a sense of pride in the countless hours of volunteerism, especially during this cycle where a lot of those meetings were back-to-back within a week or two of each other. So I think it's very important that we do something for them. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Thank you. Anyone in the public? Welcome.
And you're not surprised.
Welcome, Charlie.
My name is Charlie Wood. We moved here three years ago after 50 years in California. That's why I'm wearing a casual shirt. This meeting is really sort of stiff, so I want to make a joke first. There was a rumor going around, which is I thought you were talking about, that Brian was so hassled by the park committee that he volunteered for the assistant city manager.
That's not a rumor, Charlie.
Exactly. I would like to, I'm thrilled that you're sitting here and talking so constructively about a project that a lot of us have been working on since two, three years ago. I want to, for the record, clarify that when we talk about the rowing club, we're talking about 150 to 175 kids that encompass the Cincinnati Junior Rowing Club, which has the fourth fastest women's juniors team in the country and the sixth fastest men's team in the country. And they win their own regatta at East Fork Lake generally every year. What I would like to say to Josh and to the city manager and to Brian is they've done a great job working with the rowing club, with the juniors, to take into account the critical issues facing them. They sit right under the bloody bridge, and KYTC has a lot to do to take care of them. But what the city has done has been remarkable. So thank you very, very much for looking after those kids. Appreciate it. And thank you for saying yes tonight. I can't wait.
Yeah, thank you, Charlie.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any questions?
Please introduce yourself.
I'm Steve Glacken.
Thanks.
And as you all know, I've been a real estate agent for about 45 years, and I've been involved in large projects. And I just wanted to clarify, I'm not not exactly sure how that answer all came out that you asked about, is there going to be eyes on the project before the actual appropriations are made?
Yes.
They are? Okay. Because I've been involved in these large things before. We've gone from, I've seen this happen from the architects' drawings and what their what their budgets were and everything, and they said, well, by now, this should be. And then all of a sudden, when you get to the end, you're dead. Where are we at now? I've lived that. So I just want to make sure I didn't get that from the answer. So I just want to make sure.
Just to be very clear, there's going to be multiple eyes in this building on it because it has to start with the finance department when it gets sent. So the finance department's first going to look at it, is this line up with what we've been told? Are the funds there? What happens with that? Then it's going to go over to the city manager's office where it's going to be reviewed by our building officials. Dave Rogers is chief of that, so he's going to look at that. Brian Stefano has a significant amount of experience in that and working through that. We're going to go through that. And then it will get to me where we look at, and all of that will have the backup with it. So when they submit, they don't just send a paper and say, we want a million dollars now. They need to submit a form that lays out what they've done, what the time they've spent, and then there has to be documentation to back all of that up. But before we even get to that, we're going to have, all this stuff has to be bid out, and it has to be done by the state's model procurement code. So we're going to know what those bids lie at at the very beginning of this process. So as we go through that, if there's issues with the bids, let's say that this stuff comes in significantly higher, and there's certainly could happen. In that case, we're going to have to back up a little bit and say, okay, well, maybe we need to cut this out, or maybe we need to change how we do this to accomplish the same purposes. So the seven and a half million dollars was the amount of money that the state granted us for this park. It is our goal to make that park work in seven and a half million dollars or less. So we're going to have our eyes on that. And as the mayor said, a big part of the delay for this, the last two meetings where it got pulled off, was as we were working with them to get a working budget to look at. So we say, okay, we're going to make sure, first of all, before we have this vote, are we close to seven and a half million dollars to do this? Because saying we have a $20 million park doesn't work. We had that situation in Festival Park. We had an engineer working on that, and they came back to us and said, this park where we were going to spend $5 million is going to cost $60 million. Well, that obviously doesn't fly. So we got to make sure we're thorough with that.
And add one other component. It has a do not exceed clause in it as well.
Oh, that's great. Good.
And in the field, just to point out too, is that we have staff that are dedicated, like John had mentioned. Dave Rogers is our chief building official, but he's also project manager. He'll be in the field looking at this stuff as well. I'm also a building inspector and building official, so I'll be in there looking at this stuff as well. So we're going to have more, we're going to have a lot of eyes on the project, right, Andrew? So there's going to be a lot of us down there at any point in time. Just to your point is absolutely, we just don't want to sign this and have just, hey, we'll come back in six months and there's a park, right? That's not what we're, we're absolutely not going to do.
Right, good. I agree. And Cindy has a question. In the in the park itself, when it comes to the parking, and is that going to be paid parking or is that going to be free parking for in the park?
In the park, there's, in the park proper, there is not intended parking. It's going to be on the adjacent ends, correct?
Yeah, we're going to try to reduce all of the vehicle traffic within the park to as little as necessary.
The goal is that this becomes a passive park.
Okay.
Without vehicular traffic to make it more safe.
Okay. And then is that the parking on either end, then? Is that going to be paid parking?
The intent is not to be paid parking at this moment.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Hello, everyone. My name is Jen Shepper. I live on Park Avenue just south of 10th Street. I was welcomed to be a part of the Parks Committee. I thank that. I thank all the efforts made by the city manager, assistant city manager, all of you, and Josh Tunning and everyone else, all of my other park committee volunteers. I also thank you, Andrew, for all your openness to work with all of us citizens and with the city. It's been wonderful. I am, since the kayaks got established here in the city of Newport at the James Taylor Park, I'm here to represent that because I want to keep that momentum going. And currently, right now, it's at the location of where the dog park is. That is not a good final destination for that because it's not necessarily a safe for someone who's a novice kayaker to go out. We want to keep them from going out on the Ohio River and basically go on the Licking River. Ideally, it would be better to move in a little bit further south on the Licking River to have access somewhere possibly in that Phase Two part around where the sand volleyball access at watered there. So I just want to stand up and say I will continue to volunteer my time for that and just would like to be, keep that in the whole process of the planning. And I'd be happy to to set up meetings. I've had Ken Reckton help meet, also was part, working with Josh Tunning to get the National Park Service grant that is currently being used. So I can offer a lot. So I just want to continue to be able to work with the city to help get this, and I'm very, very, very excited. I will be throwing a big celebration when there's a groundbreaking. So thank you for everyone's efforts.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you, Jen.
And we are having a lot of conversation with Andrew and his team about kayaking and the importance of that. And we've made that very clear. It's important to us to have a nice launch. So yeah, we're working through that for sure.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? All right. I just want to make a comment that tonight's action will mark an important moment for Newport. James Taylor Park will become a strengthened public asset owned by the people of the city, and these improvements will ensure it continues to grow as a gathering place for families in the broader community. This process that's brought us together has been thoughtful and collaborative, and I'm proud of all of you and the many partnerships that are going to bring these plans to life. So thank you so much. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Smith Morrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Reckton?
Yes.
Commissioner Sutherland?
Yes.
Commissioner Radwansky?
Yes.
Mayor Cudouli?
Yes. Oh, we can clap for that? Yeah, let's clap. All right, a couple more items. Commissioner's Order Number 54.
An order of the Board of Commissioners, City of Newport, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the city manager to issue and execute a purchase order for one ambulance for use in the fire EMS department.
So moved?
Second.
Chief.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. This is a 2025 Medex mobile ambulance, and it will be replacing our 2015 Horton that has about 86,000 miles on it. I'm happy to take any questions that you may have. It is a twin to our 22. This will leave us with a 22 and a 2018 and a 25 in our fleet.
Great.
Plans are to continue with three units then?
The the third unit is a reserve unit.
Okay.
It's typically our oldest unit, and then if we have a vehicle out for maintenance, we don't have an ambulance out of service. We still have two ambulances, two ambulances responding to calls in the city.
Where does the other ambulance go? Is it the city garage or is it?
It stays in the firehouse.
Okay, thank you. Any other?
At the seams.
Any other questions on the board from the public? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Reckton?
Yes.
Commissioner Sutherland?
Yes.
Commissioner Radwansky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith Morrow?
Yes.
Mayor Cudouli?
Yes.
Mayor, I will point out too is with the spare ambulance, like recently, we loaned that out to a neighboring agency that had an ambulance down as well. So it has a benefit for the the community at large beyond just here in the city as well.
Great. Thanks for that, John.
Next item on the agenda is Commissioner Order Number 58.
An order of the Board of Commissioners, City of Newport, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the city manager to issue a purchase order for one 2026 Chevrolet pickup truck. So moved?
Second.
Second.
So this is, uh, for use in the Public Works Department. Um, we started looking at, uh, the fleet, well, across the city, but in particular, on what the needs are currently in Public Works and how they currently operate. Uh, they intended originally, and I think was budgeted for, was a, a dump truck with all of the, um, snow removal and salt spreading outfit on that. But after we really started looking at how they operated, that's not really beneficial to them. Um, so this is a typical work pickup truck. It's a one-ton model, uh, that will be outfitted with a salt spreader and snow plow and, uh, in place of a fairly expensive dump truck.
Any questions on the board?
Is this going to be a daily driver for someone, or is it going to be parked, uh, just specifically for snow removal?
No, that's the, that's the good thing about having vehicles like this that can be multipurpose. So this will be put into the fleet right away, and it'll be used year round. So when it comes time for snow removal, they'll, they'll put the spreader box in and the plow attachment on that, and then they'll put in for snow removal. So, yeah, year round.
Hopefully, we don't have as much snow as we did this year. I was hoping not saying more.
Anyone in the public? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Sutherland?
Yes.
Commissioner Radwansky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith Morrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Reckton?
Yes.
Mayor Cudley?
Yes. That completes the legislations for this evening, and it moves to Department Head Comments. Chief Paluso.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So as you all have in front of you there, you have a picture in front of you. Today, in conjunction with the Bellevue Dayton Fire Department, um, we were able to obtain three ConX trailers, shipping containers, um, which you may see coming across the ocean to ship goods. Uh, these are commonly being used for many things right now, including houses for people that want tiny houses. Um, our Campbell County Fire Training Center is in Highland Heights, Kentucky. It's out off of Martha Lanes Collins, and it's just not feasible for us to use. Um, so what this allows us to do, Bellevue Dayton had these pods and had them set up on Third Avenue in Dayton. So Public Works went out, down by the salt bin, put some gravel down, compacted it. And then today, we were actually able to move those here and secure them here today. Uh, Wednesday, the fence will start. Hopefully, it will finish. So it will be surrounded by a chain link fence. Uh, my hopes are that we can get some more work done with it, some landscaping, get them painted, maybe some murals on them potentially. Um, a lot of it just depends on the funding that, that we can get for this. It just allows us to have a more realistic area to train in. We can build half walls. We can move them. Um, we can change the layout. When we pull the equipment out of the fire bay and we practice hose stretches, we practice search and rescue, that space is that space. We can't really change it. Um, so this is something that we'll be able to, we'll be able to change, um, really as much as we want, once we have, once we have the half walls built. Um, and then, you know, there, there is a bit of work that needs to be done, but the initial cost of the, of the trailers and the metal fabrication that's already been done is a huge savings. And it's also close enough for Bellevue Dayton to come over and use it. And I also expect that the Police Department will want to use it for some things as well. And that's really all I have unless anybody has any questions for me.
Uh, one question.
Yes, sir.
A lot of times, though, you'll see them use these and light them on fire. Or is our intent to do that or not?
There will not be any fires in there. No fires will be lit inside that. If there ever is a potential for us to use our smoke machine, that will be broadcast out before we do it. Um, we do have a smoke machine that we use. It's very similar to what you'll see in a haunted house. Um, I don't know that it would cause any concern. I don't think that we would produce enough smoke to cause concern, but, but we would put it out on social media before we were to ever do that.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone else on the board or the public?
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Fangen?
Uh, nothing tonight, sir. Thank you.
Tiffany?
Nothing.
Dan Braun, or Billy?
On behalf of Dan Braun, who is climbing some mountain somewhere, uh, we have nothing.
Josh, you got anything to add? Bev, you got anything to add? Nope. John, or, I'm sorry, Brian first and then John.
You're going to get my normal answer. Nothing tonight. Thank you.
It's, I mean, we're making it around the turn here.
Right.
Blow it down a little. Um, just want to, uh, echo some of the comments made here and, and appreciate the, the, the work that the Park Committee did. And, you know, I think that, to echo some of the comments from the board, this is how that, that good government is done, that we have this idea out there, and then we filter it, and then we have the public comment. And changes were made to the designs based on the comments. And our committee was, was, was broad from, from all over the community, different walks of life, different interests, and we're able to come together with, with an important goal in mind. So this is really cool that we've done that. Uh, touched on a little bit before, but we're looking to do the same thing with Festival Park. I know Josh has been working significantly on that. Um, it, it's hard to pinpoint timeframes because of the approvals of the Corps, the other agencies that have to go through here, and the bidding process. But I don't think that it's unreasonable to say that between now and two years from now, we're going to have a completely transformed riverfront. And we've been talking about Festival Park for the past 20-plus years. So the idea that we're going to get that done and then what's going to be a world-class park over at James Taylor as well is really going to transform, um, the banks of, here in Newport. And it's very exciting for us. So this is just, I really appreciate our, our staff. We wouldn't have been able to do this with, as thoroughly or as rapidly without Josh and his expertise in this. And, you know, and I appreciate the, the work that we've done with Corporex and, and this board and the thoroughness because asking the questions, and, you know, I know some people in the community were saying, well, why'd it get delayed? Why'd it get pulled off? But having a better product, I'd rather have a good product that we're all proud of than do something quickly just to say we got it done. And I think this is a fantastic first step to what's going to be a lot of generational changes on our riverfront in the very short amount of time. So, thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you, John. You want to go first, Julie?
Sure. Sure. Well, I, I won't, uh, say everything that everybody's already said about the parks, but I'm, I'm just, I will say, very, very happy. And I can tell everybody here is really pleased that we've gotten to this point. So, thank you, Andrew. Um, it's going to be beautiful. I can't wait. And, uh, I think all of Newport and people that come here are really going to enjoy this. So, very pleased about that. Wanted to say a little bit also about the property assessment moratoriums for these three properties. And, um, just, you know, these are things that we do pretty frequently. I think these are, um, important, like a lot of them. Um, and I'm, I'm just really glad for the work that investors are doing in our community, restoring some of the older buildings and, um, reusing them in good ways. Uh, and as John said earlier, we, we can't really do anything about what the, the schools or the county do with regard to their taxes, but our part was to hold, um, put a moratorium on, um, assessing taxes on the improvements. So they will be locked in place with where the PBA is as of the, the time that the agreement goes through. So that's good. And, um, the, the work that's being done at 337 West 11th is really important. That's a contributing historic structure in the Buena Vista Historic District. And, um, Luke Warner and his company will be, I think they've already done a whole lot of the work, as I recall. But that will be converted from four residential units to, I think, a combination of residential and then a storefront, which is what it was originally. And that's really cool to have that coming back in, in West Newport. Um, the other, the other properties are good as well. Of course, the one on Linden is residential. It's not Mike's, but it will be his neighbor. And then, um, I, I think the, um, the one on Monmouth represents growth for that, um, for that business that's already here in Monmouth. So it's all really good. And, um, I just, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to do this from time to time. It's, it's good for business and it's good for Newport. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just one quick thing, you know, Brian, we had talked about this where, you know, um, I had, I think it was about two weeks ago, someone from, uh, the Northern Kentucky Water, um, District come through with the lead line replacement program that they came and talked to us about. Um, I think it was a month or two ago. And what I'm hearing, you know, so they came out and they looked at my line at 643 Linden. It's not lead, which is a relief, um, of course. But, um, I also heard that there were a, a number of other folks from there inspectors saying that, well, you know, one lady, she, you know, just had hers done last year. Is there a way that, or hopefully that we can, um, have them expand that program to try to get more lead lines replaced throughout Newport, maybe?
I, I did bring this up to staff and, uh, who are dealing with Water District and the open house piece of this. I think there was an anticipated percentage of, um, unaccounted for, uh, lead line pipes that have already been replaced. I don't know that there's an opportunity for that, but certainly something that we've brought up to them, and we'll see and wait for their feedback on that. But, because it is legitimate, and I've heard a few stories myself of the same, that there's been, hey, I already did mine, or I just did mine last week or last month or whatever I heard a story of. So I'm sure that was, uh, um, not great news for that property owner, but, uh,
Sure.
Still, it's, it's, it's great for all of us that the, these pipes are getting replaced. So, but we'll, we're, we're checking into that.
Awesome. Thank you, Brian. Uh, Mayor, I have no other comments. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Ken?
Um, I'm not going to talk about BFDs tonight, so there won't be any. But we did something that is a big deal tonight as we're, we're moving on James Taylor, which is a big deal. That's another, the other thing. Um, the other thing, uh, is important to recognize the, the work that everybody's done on this park. Um, Jen and I met quite a few years ago about the park. And, um, and I'm glad that, um, the iteration that I'm seeing so far incorporates so many of the things that the citizens brought to us. I'm looking forward to, um, an answer or two on how we're going to pursue access at grade through the south end of the park. We're going to make this into a pedestrian-only park, and it's going to give us an opportunity to have a, a really nice spectacular park on that corner. But we have to make it accessible to our citizens. And, um, cutting them off that way is not, is not the best way. So I'm looking forward to hearing back from you on that, Andrew. Um, the other thing I wanted to compliment the Public Works Department. Um, and I'm going to compliment the Clifton Neighborhood too. Clifton Neighborhood put in some new trees and signage at the corner of, it would be the southeast corner of Central and 13th Street. And they did a nice job. They landscaped it, everything else. The, the landscaping at the corner of 12th was getting out of hand, and the Public Works Department came in and cleared it all out, which is wonderful. Uh, talked to Don Spalding the other day, and he's going to come up with a set of plans and put some, uh, new plants in there, which is really a, a key component to having these nice corners to our neighborhood looking good. So that's all I have. Tell the Public Works, thank you for that work. Appreciate it. That's all I got to talk about.
Ken, if I could add real quick on that, all the concrete work that's being done in the, in the city building lot right now is, is also our public work. Staff are doing a phenomenal job and actually saving the taxpayers money. We figured about a third of the cost of bidding that, that work out, so.
Excellent. Thanks, man.
Good work. Aaron?
Uh, just again, thanks to, uh, staff and, uh, Parks Committee for, for working together to, to bring these, uh, bring these parks. And don't forget about, um, the, the festival parks. So tho- those two parks are going to be, it's a generational development. Those, those things are going to be around for a very long time, um, that are going to make Newport even better. Um, we have, we're seeing a lot of growth in Newport right now, uh, under the leadership of our new City Manager. Uh, and we, we also have a lot of old businesses. We were just, uh, we were just at Steinhauser who celebrated their 120th, uh, anniversary of being in business. The governor came down and honored, honored those guys. Uh, so we're seeing a lot of growth and, but we also have a, a lot of older businesses as well. So it's good to see that these things, uh, the business and develop, that these things are developing and thriving. So, um, again, thanks for being here tonight and, um, looking forward to these parks.
Yes, I think we're all looking forward to these parks. And I think this park actually being able to occur while the bridge is going to be under construction and all things, there were concerns that all this was going to be delayed. And it feels like every project that we have in the chain gets delayed for different reasons. So we're counting on you to get this started and get this done. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Radwansky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith Morrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Reckton?
Yes.
Commissioner Sutherland?
Yes.
Mayor Cudley?
Yes. Thank you all.